We will now call a December 19th Common Council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lorg is accused.
Here.
Alderman Marshall is accused.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here. Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Catherine, would you like to start us off, please?
Certainly.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody would please take a look at the minutes of December 5th, 2023 for a few moments. And when you are satisfied, there's no discussion, omissions, errors, or corrections. Motion, please.
Kerkowski can make a motion to approve the minutes of December 5th, 2023.
Gail, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Present.
Gail.
Aye.
Who's the? Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Three of the four.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Make that.
Yeah.
Okay. Been a long year. We're going to move on to item four, recognition. Very important. It's recognition to Susan A. Whitten, our retiring environmental engineer. So Catherine, would you please read that into record?
Certainly. Resolution number 12468, resolution of appreciation to Susan A. Whitten. Whereas Susan Whitten commenced her tenure with the City of Oak Creek on February 11th, 2002, assuming the role of environmental engineer within the engineering department. And whereas, over the course of her extensive service to the city, Sue has played an integral role in several prominent projects, notably contributing to the successful development of Drexel Town Square and the Lake Vista projects. And whereas Sue spearheaded the comprehensive remediation efforts at the Lake Vista North properties, addressing historical soil contamination and overseeing the mitigation of low-grade wetlands. Her leadership involved close collaboration with consultants and the local contractor to meticulously monitor bluff stability and assess the optimal cost-efficient methods for bluff stabilization. And whereas Sue skillfully developed various presentations, instrumental and regulatory agency permit applications, and meetings with neighboring property owners. Her efforts have consistently fostered a collaborative and unified approach between the city, its citizens, and government agencies in the endeavor to restore the lakefront for the benefit of all. And whereas Sue's exemplary work and unwavering dedication to the Lake Vista North project projects earned her well-deserved recognition. She played a pivotal role in coordinating the design of the Lake Vista North Bluff Top Stabilization Project in collaboration with the city's environmental consultant. And whereas Sue has been a valuable asset to the City of Oak Creek throughout her many years of service, securing millions of dollars in grant funding to offset expenses related to site design, clearing, and grading, as well as stabilization and construction activities. And whereas Sue retired from her position as environmental engineer with the City of Oak Creek Engineering Department on December 6th, 2023, marking the completion of over 21 years of dedicated service to the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the city extends its heartfelt best wishes for good health and enduring happiness to Susan A. Whitten and her family in the well-deserved retirement years that lie ahead. Be it further resolved that this resolution of appreciation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit to Sue a suitable copy thereof. Pass and adopted this 19th day of December, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Matt, would you like to say a few words for Sue?
There. Sorry. Matt Sullivan, City Engineer. As the resolution stated, Sue was an integral part in our engineering department in also developing many of our areas that were brownfields. That basically we reclaimed old industrial areas and made them prominent areas now in the city, and Drexel Town Square being one of them. And areas that a lot of people enjoy on a daily basis, walking and enjoying nature and kind of bringing us together. She also brought, you know, a good intergovernmental agency coordination efforts and kind of grew our collaborative efforts, I guess, between the DNR and the city to a point where she was very trusted in a lot of the work that she does. And it continues to go. I mean, we continue to get the benefits from her work even after retirement. And I think in the near future, the ability for us to work with our DNR people and our staff members is greatly, you know, been enhanced because of her. Obviously, the lakefront, it's a great success story and it continues to be. She was very integral in the last building coming down, and now the bluff stabilization on the north and Peter Cooper. So the city is, you know, going to feel her effects for a very, very long time. Much appreciated working with her and learning her abilities and her efforts to the city. So I wish her a great retirement.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Counsel, anything on Sue?
I think you and I can just, you know, we've been here as long as we have been. She's always been a pleasure to work with, very professional, and I wish her very happy retirement.
All said, I had the pleasure of working with Sue on Root River watershed study years ago. They grouped people from all over southeast Wisconsin for this particular study. So there were folks from all over the place. It did not take long for Sue to stand out in this crowd. She knew her stuff when it came to it. It all really had to do with the water flow and what's going into our lakes and streams and ponds. Reputation at MMSD as well. Matt talked about the relationships built at the DNR. She also built some very strong relationships at MMSD. And an environmental engineer probably never really gets the headlines unless there's some bad, ugly stuff to be dealt with. We never had those headlines in Oak Creek here with Sue. She's one of those unsung heroes that just quietly goes about her business. And her business was done very, very well here at the City of Oak Creek. And all our residents and anybody that's dealing with water issues throughout southeastern Wisconsin, dealing with the lake, to the Oak Creek, to the Root River, is better off for her services. So Matt summed it up. She was an integral part of our redevelopment on the lakefront. And for that, we'll always be thankful. I'm going to wish her a long and happy retirement on behalf of all the residents of Oak Creek and the entire Common Council. Wish her a long and happy retirement. So. Could we have a motion on that, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail Moose to approve resolution 12468-121923, resolution of appreciation to Susan A. Whitten, retiring environmental engineer.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item five is public hearing to consider a request by Ridgeview Drive or Frontline Commercial Real Estate to rezone a portion of the property at 1850 West Oakwood Road from M1 to M1 Manufacturing. There'll be no change to the flood fringe, and it will go to C1. And it will be to amend the planned unit development on the properties at 9970-10020-140, South 20th Street, and it'll also include a portion of 1850 West Oakwood Road. Now I'll ask that Catherine reads that in very properly to the record.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Ridgeview Drive LLC, Frontline Commercial Real Estate, to rezone a portion of the property at 1850 West Oakwood Road to M1 Manufacturing, no change to FW Floodway FF Flood Fringe or C1 Shoreland Wetland Conservancy Districts. And to amend the planned unit development on the property is at 9970-10020 and 10040 South 20th Street. And to include a portion of the property at 1850 West Oakwood Road as part of the PUD. Applicant is Frontline Commercial Real Estate. Property owner is Ridgeview Drive LLC, Frontline Commercial Real Estate, Deborah J. Hamilton. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is November 21st, 2023.
Thank you, Catherine. Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. And the first public hearing this evening is on a request to rezone the property, or a portion of the property at 1850 West Oakwood Road, as well as amend the PUD planned unit development affecting the properties at 9970-10020 and 10040 South 20th Street. At the very core of this is the proposal to develop a piece of manufacturing property into a roughly 400,000 square foot facility. There are a few things that need to happen in order for that to occur. And I'll kind of scroll through those for you. There is a portion of the property that is being acquired for stormwater purposes, which we'll go into in a little bit. And that's really the rezoning from RS3 to M1 Manufacturing. It's not the whole property. It's just a portion that they're acquiring from the property owner to the south. This property, the larger property, is kind of part of an old planning development that was approved back in the 80s. I believe it was 1988, as is the case with a lot of South Branch Industrial Park. And the standards back then were different. The format for our planning developments was different. And so the amendment of the PUD to include this new area at 1850 West Oakwood Road, it also gave us an opportunity to revamp, if you will, or reformat that planning development to something more of a modern standard for our enforcement and for our management of those planning developments. It also clarified some of the permitted uses in the PUD and updated some of the standards with respect to parking and setbacks. And included our new standards for landscaping, lightings, and signage, as well as providing a time of compliance and some language, more modern language regarding revocation and acknowledgement of that. So as I mentioned, there's a couple of things going on. And the second item on the agenda after this is a certified survey map. And that is for the property just south of there. And the portion that you see in red on your screen, and I apologize if everyone can't see that, that is the area that is being acquired and added to this PUD and part of the rezoning. And that would be for, it's not proposed for development per se. It is being acquired for open space, is being required for stormwater detention. And it is just being attached to the larger lot to the north. So that, even though it is part of that PUD, there would be restrictions, as I understand it, and I'm sure we'll hear from the applicant this evening as well, that would limit the activities on that to stormwater management and landscaping. So although it's part of the development, it's not part of the development, the developed portion of it. There is also a separate action that's pending, and it is not the matter of the hearing this evening, but it will kind of make sense as we discuss the overall development and specifically the need for a development agreement, as is the case with many of our developments and public improvements. There is an official map amendment that will be taking place subsequent to this. And this will be held at a public hearing in January. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention because one of the proposals is to relocate a cul-de-sac from this property at the edge of Ridgeview Drive. And typically, what would happen is if you develop a property in Oak Creek, and there's public asset or public street or orderman or what have you, you're going to enter into a development agreement to basically fund, dedicate, and construct those improvements. And so there's a request is a little bit different in this case, and we can get into it to the extent that affects the PUD, sorry, that affects the PUD because there's some language in there saying that development agreement would be required. But just reminded you that this is not the subject of the hearing. We're not really talking about the map amendment per se, but recognize that there will be some discussion about that this evening. And there's the portion of the roadway for the south of there, just for reference purposes. I thought we had a plan to show you. Yeah. So this is a public hearing. At this point in time, I'd request that anyone, any questions or comments regarding the proposal to rezone these properties as part of an amended planning development of the properties at 9970-10020, 10040 South 20th Street, and a portion of 1850 West Oakwood Road. Please approach the microphone, give your name, address, and proceed to address your questions and or comments to the Common Council. This public hearing is now open.
Great. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium on name and address.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Attorney Brian Randall of Amundson Davis 111 East Kilborn Avenue in Milwaukee, here representing Frontline Commercial Real Estate. Its principal, John Schlitter. It is an owned and operated family-owned company. So I'm also accompanied this evening by Jack and Max Slater, who are in the back row. Our project team also includes JSD Professional Services as our civil engineers. I don't have any questions. The brief comments are, we really appreciate staff's work on this. Couple of new issues particularly related to that cul-de-sac came up at the last Plan Commission meeting and going into that. But otherwise, we're very excited to bring this proposal forward, dust off that 1988 PUD and update it per the current conditions and restrictions, and bring a new manufacturing facility to the city on a long vacant and dormant site. As mentioned by Doug, and on the graphic right there, that Lot 1, which we are purchasing from Deborah or DJ Hamilton, she's also in the back row on the other side. Very good to work with DJ as far as property that she's willing to sell to us. And importantly, we can put our stormwater there. The site plan that you don't have in front of you, but that's going to be part of our future presentations, shows that area is just for the stormwater and a whole new grove of trees. We're going to landscape that very densely, and that will be a nice buffer for the neighbors in that area. John has gone door-to-door. I think he's hosted some neighborhood meetings. He's put his phone number and email address out there. And as early or as late as even this afternoon, I know he's had a long conversation with one of the neighbors. So we're very pleased to have had that engagement already. Alderman Gail, I think it's in your district, and we haven't formally updated you on things, but we wanted to make sure we had this plan ready to bring forward. So tonight with the PUD and the certified survey map, that's very important to make sure this land is consolidated and in a developable state for us. And then we still have, as Doug mentioned, the official map amendment to address this cul-de-sac and some of the other roadways in the south. Roadways that don't really exist. They're on a map, but they don't exist. And then our final site and building plan approvals. We don't have with the property owner to our north anything worked out as of yet, but we recognize the way the ordinance is written and the staff recommendation that that obligation is on us as the development team. So we're going to continue to work on that, and we're going to ask the council to approve it this evening as presented. Whole team can answer any questions, but recognizing the time of year and the strong staff support, we hope that you ask or that you move it forward with approval, and we'll be back in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Second call. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach the podium.
Mark Verhaelen, 9330 South Nicholson Road. I own a property on Judith Lane that, on the west side of Judith Lane, it runs up, and it's my northeast corner touches the southwest corner of Mr. Schluter's property. I guess I kind of put this to the Plan Commission at the last meeting about extending emergency access off the end of Judith Lane into Mr. Schluter's property. I mentioned the idea to Mr. Schluter a couple of weeks ago, and he didn't have any negative comments as far as I could garner from what he said in our conversation. But anyway, the reason I'm asking for this is, first of all, past policy in Oak Creek, we've had a couple of developments in the last seven or eight years. And one of them was when I was on the Common Council myself, and it was in Alderman Guzekowski's jurisdiction. It was for FedEx. And we debated that issue quite a bit as to their egress and access to their property. And one of the things that was stressed by the planning department and stuff here was that they needed a second emergency access. So we worked real hard, and I called Chris a couple of times about being on board with what they wanted to do there. And they ended up putting an emergency access out to Oakwood Road along the railroad tracks for a second access and egress point. So this is a pretty similar thing. Mr. Schluter's property is on the end of Ridgeview, which is a quite, quite long dead-end street. The street that went into FedEx is also quite long. So I guess there was a need at that time to have a second egress and access point. So that's why it was even brought to the council in the first place. So that's the similarities of the two properties. The reason I'm asking for the extra egress is because Judith Lane, right now, dead ends into the property that Mr. Schluter owns. With the emergency access there, the fire department gains another access point for emergency vehicles and whatnot. But it also opens up possibly parts of Judith Lane where I own property so I could maybe do some development in the future. So that's why I'm asking for this to start with. But cost-wise, I believe it would be very negligible to put this onto Mr. Schluter's site plan. Neighborhood impact is virtually zero because I'm asking for that a gravel drive would be put in there with a locked cable gate. So there'd be no traffic going up and down there, no cars to speak of trying to get in and out of the parking lot because it would be blocked off just the way it is now. So the impact to the neighborhood is probably zero. The only thing probably advantageous to the neighborhood is they would also gain, if there is anything, any issues on Judith where they'd have to have a second entry, they'd have it from the north. So the way I view it for negligible to minimum cost, you gain a lot in the safety end of it, and it also benefits myself being a neighboring property there. So I'm kind of hoping that my comments get a little bit of consideration and possibly get put into Mr. Schluter's site plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. You know, we'll address that after the public hearing when we come up to the council's portion. Third and final call. Anybody wishing to speak? Okay, we will now close the public hearing and go on to consideration of the ordinance, which would rezone the properties at 1850 West Oakwood from M1 to M1 Manufacturing and establish planned unit development on the properties at 9970-120 and 140, South 20th Street, and a portion of 1850 West Oakwood Road. So with that, I will open it up to the council for questions, comments.
I think the first obvious question is what was planning's take on Mr. Verhaelen's request?
Certainly. I think planning certainly acknowledges that, in many cases, more access is better. But we, the rule that Mark's referring to is in the subdivision ordinance. And it limits the length of cul-de-sacs, the number of lots in the cul-de-sac. And if you're subdividing, that's true. That's entirely correct. This is an existing property. It's actually a combination. It's not really subdividing. It's actually combining. And like, the principal difference is we work very closely with the fire department to ensure that the access, the emergency access to any property, any type of development in any given situation is what they need. And they need to make it safe and equitable. And in this case, the fire department in their review of the preliminary plans, I'll certainly let the chief speak to that if he so desires, has indicated that a second point of access would not be necessary. So we are relying on that to, and when we will be looking at the site plan, to acknowledge what is necessary from a fire protection perspective. And that would be incorporated into staff's recommendation.
So another access not necessary, but does it hurt in any way?
I mean, I think it's an added cost to the property owner. I think it's certainly, and just given my knowledge of the proposal, site plan might have some engineering issues with respect to crossing some drainage areas, crossing some berms. And nothing's, you know, anything can be engineered. And that's not a reason in and of itself to not have that. And I guess I'm just saying that I don't think we're, as a staff, are comfortable requiring it.
Steve?
My perspective, it's almost apples and oranges just because, hear me out. With the proposal tonight, we're talking about developing property for light manufacturing. So nobody's come forward to tell us exactly what's going to go in there, but it's going to be light manufacturing of something, okay? Leave it at that. So the fire department says, okay, we don't need a second access. Now with FedEx, we knew FedEx was going to go in there. And somebody decided that because FedEx is going in there with the trucks, with the need to have a second emergency access to that property because we knew what was going in there. So I would suspect that if they come back with their conditional use permit for whoever's going to go in there, fire department's still going to take a look at it. And they may come back and say, hey, we might want to consider something. And at that point, I think we could take a look at what Mr. Verhaelen is suggesting. But I think for tonight, it's good to know, but I don't know if it's exactly necessary right now.
I was going to give you the Assistant Fire Chief's perspective from it, but we do have the chief with us to comment from fire's perspective, so you can get it right from the horse's mouth.
Mike Kresic, representing the fire department. So I was going to refer back to Assistant Chief Mike Havy. He and I have spent some time on this particular project. The viewpoint that he presented during the planning process and Plan Commission, that is the fire department's stance on this. Every project is unique. You apply code standards to those projects, but you have to take a look at the totality of what is being built, the occupancy classification, things like that. So certainly, there is that opportunity later on. But again, the stance of the fire department is consistent with what Assistant Chief Havy presented at the Plan Commission is what's been stated this evening.
Thank you, Chief. Chris?
Yeah, I just, because I talked to Mark some and I've heard, you know, some from you know, globally, it appears to me that this would be useful from a development standpoint at some point down the road to make sure that we have something there that would be useful and make it developable, you know, the properties that Mark talks about, residential areas to the west with this emergency access we call. But so, but it strikes me as, is that something Mark negotiates with John? Or it doesn't necessarily need to be required in this particular document? Is that what I'm getting from what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think that's fair, Alderman Gail. I mean, it's, I think the future development of those properties is not reliant on that emergency access from the north. That'd probably be the most cost-effective way of providing that type of access. And by no means is the only way. I mean, there are officially mapped streets that do show future access out to Oakwood Road, which would allow for the subdivision of those properties. And I totally understand where property owner is coming from. This would probably be the most cost-effective solution for doing that.
We're just dealing with the fact that we don't necessarily need to incorporate or intrinate on this PUD.
That would be our recommendation, yes. But that you wouldn't.
It's, and it's not there currently.
It's not there currently.
Chris? At least I'll give you a few moments to catch up. We are actually on item six.
Just to clarify. So if we vote on this tonight and approve it, you're not adverse to Mr. Verhaelen bringing this forth at a later date?
No, not at all. I mean, if there's a solution that can be worked up between the parties that makes sense from an engineering perspective, makes sense from an operational perspective for the fire department because I know gravel roads and lock gates are not, you know, their preferred method of operation. That's, we'll take a look at the circumstances at that point, see if it makes sense.
So the one thing we really didn't address, we talked about that. We took fire's perspective on it. And again, we relied on their expertise. We did see renderings of what this development may look like, and in that corner... , uh, renderings of what this development may look like. And in that corner, if I'm not mistaken, it's rather heavily wooded, and it's also bermed. Um, it helps with stormwater management going on, which is also part of the reason for the change of this property that we're talking about, uh, to be part of the development, but yet never developed. Um, if the architect would like to speak onto that, how that would affect the engineering of stormwater, if it would, I don't know that for a fact, or if our staff would like to appreciate that perspective as well.
Andrew Mertz with, uh, JSD Professional Services. I'm the civil engineer for the project.
Andrew, make sure you talk closely.
Mike Goodenough. Um, from a stand, from the stormwater standpoint, the gravel drive, it, it would not necessarily affect the stormwater. We could probably configure it around it, but it does impact, we have screening along that area that would, you know, block or screen the residential properties to the south. So that was, that would be our, I guess our concern was if we put this gravel drive and now you are going to see the, from the residential properties, this development. So we were trying to make an attempt to screen the, uh, residential property as much as we could.
Is there bermage along that south side?
There is. There's a berm that wraps around, um, that south edge of the development.
Um, so, you know, that, that was brought up late, and about the only opinion we did have at, at planning was from fire. Um, and they deemed it unnecessary, um, due to, just to reiterate what the chief said, and you heard it right from him, so. Now, you know, as Doug put it, we do have rules for development with a cul-de-sac. And Doug, you can, you can clarify the language, but it can only be so long with so many homes on it, you can't develop it, and maybe that's antiquated, and we as a community maybe need to look at that going forward and how that was developed years ago. Uh, given, given what hydrants and things like that, and of course, fire would have to weigh in on that heavily because that's probably where it came from in the first place from my understanding.
Yeah, I mean, he'd, he'd be happy to do that. And in, in fact, I mean, we have had conversations over the years about, you know, how, how we can, uh, preserve the, the needs for providing a safe community, uh, and development, which is, you know, consistent with best management practices for, for fire protection and EMS and what have you, uh, but still allow for, you know, reasonable development. And, you know, on an ongoing basis, we'd be happy to have those discussions. And as, as, as Mike, uh, Mike, assistant chief Havy and as, uh, chief Kresic have said, I mean, there's, in any given situation, there's a number of, of codes that apply, and that they apply, uh, based on occupancy. And so it's not just a, you know, it's just not checking a box. It's, it's really taking a look at the environment more holistically and, and in terms of what the city would require for fire protection and emergency services.
Chief?
Uh, Mike Kresic, representing the fire department. And to Doug's point, I'm sorry, to Doug's point, um, if that access road was immediately necessary based on what we know today about this, we would certainly be up there advocating for it. What we know is that there is a project and there's a rezone in front of us. Um, as we apply the codes, we look at what is presented and proposed for the structure. So I don't wanna get too far ahead of stating we need this or we need that until we get further along into that particular project. Uh, to the previous point about gravel roadways, I will tell you that, um, my professional opinion is that as far as access roads, they are, they are at the low end of the spectrum as far as serviceability. They're never maintained, um, and they're very seasonal. So again, I think it would, from the fire department's perspective, we're, we're comfortable with where we are and chief Havy's points on this, and we'll continue to evaluate as the project progresses.
Dan?
Uh, Doug, can you, uh, is there points in time in here in the near future on this project or other parts of this project, this, pieces that can be amended to include in the plan around? Is there some other, some negotiations between Mark and the?
I mean, absolutely. I mean, there's nothing in this PUD that precludes this from happening. It's just that we're not requiring it to happen.
Uh, Andy, sorry. Mark, can you come to the point? Do you have any thing other than the fact, you know, Doug has said, circumstances, it's not, in the PUD as it stands, we're not required. Any thought on that?
Well, even though it's not required, um, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a city planner. But just in my personal view, more safety is better than less safety, as a general statement. So, um, as I said before, for what I'm asking for, and I reali- I realize it's not my property, so I can't speak to what Mr. Schluter feels on what I'm suggesting. But, um, you know, if, if anything does occur on, on, on the backside of Mr. Schluter's property at some point, in, in my view, it would be probably beneficial for everybody involved to have another access point on a property, even though it's not required by the city. Like I said, more safety is better than less safety. And the building they're, they're proposing is quite large, it's 400,000 square feet. And if you look at the site plan, there's not a lot of, not a lot of room on the backside of that building. There's place to drive around and look, some loading docks and stuff, I would imagine.
Bikes, factors.
Right. But it, but anyway, you know, so, so there's very minimal space to move emergency equipment and stuff around in the back there anyway. And, you know, I think for everybody involved, for, like I say, the very minimal, minimal cost, that it's gonna be, you know, another access point, in my view, is better than not having it. And, and like I said, it's, it's, Doug's also said, it's, it's not a requirement per the city code, and, and it meets all the requirements for the fire department. But, you know, if there was an emergency back there, I'm sure, um, that chief Kresic would agree that they'd like to go down that, end of Judith Lane if they could get in there if they had to. You know, not that it's in the plan already, but if they had to, if there was an access there, they'd greatly appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark.
Uh...
Yep, go ahead.
Yep. Is Frontline opposed to this in the future?
Not opposed. Uh, by the way, ju- that, thank you, and I apologize. John Schluter, uh, Frontline Commercial Real Estate. Uh, we have had discussions. Um, if we would continue to have discussions and bring this forth at another meeting, I'm, I'm wanting, willing and wanting to work with him.
Lisa, I know you got here, but do you have any questions, comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there any further discussion?
Andy, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page with this, um, cul-de-sac, temporary cul-de-sac kind of situation on the end of Ridgeview. So, I think there's some staff comments on that.
I, I'll let, Doug can probably describe it better than what we did.
Sure, absolutely. I mean, without, I, I think that there's a, there's a, there's two, actually, two parts of the question here. Uh, I think that the first part is reflecting on the city's current standards. If, if you've got an officially mapped street on your property, you're doing a development, it's been standard practice throughout to, uh, dedicate, improve, uh, and, you know, just to develop that, that public roadway in accordance with the official map. So, I mean, that's the standard operating procedure. There's a good reason why we do that, uh, and that's the way we, we would be proceeding. The wrinkle in this case is that there's an official map amendment, and that's being proposed by the applicant to move that cul-de-sac off of his property onto the properties in the north. And that's where, you know, there's been a lot of confusion and looking at the plan commission meeting about, well, how can we make someone else put in a roadway for somebody else? Now, and so, boil it down to its simplest, is that our, our current standards require that, that cul-de-sac be developed. And our current standards say that that's the responsibility of the, the property owner. And, you know, I think that's, the, the second part of the equation, then becomes a really a policy decision of what, if any, uh, involvement the city would have in accommodating that on the property in the north. And I don't know that that's appropriate for, for this discussion this evening, other than the fact that I think that the requirement to have that put in, in accordance with the official map, whatever that might be, again, that's a public hearing in January, is consist, entirely consistent with the development standards of this community.
Thanks, Doug. To bring you up to speed, uh, we did address that at, at planning. So, I, on, on the current map, you see that cul-de-sac firmly sits on the property that Frontline is looking to develop. Um, and, and thank you for that, that illustration. They're, they're looking to move it to the north, and that encroaches on the property that is currently owned by another corporation, SUEPAC. Uh, SUEPAC was here representing themselves. They were willing to work with the applicant in case they ever developed theirs and how it would impact it. Um, once the applicant comes in for development, they turn that right away over to the city, that becomes our portion. Um, as you can see, if it's left on their property, um, given the configuration of the building and the parking, uh, it starts to infringe on setbacks and parking and everything going that way, too. Um, so what we came to the conclusion at, at planning was to allow them time into January for the development to proceed, uh, at this level, because council always has the final word, uh, to work along with SUEPAC to see if they can work something out. And that is really incumbent on Frontline. If that deal doesn't happen, then we gotta look at a redesign or something else, and we'll be back to the drawing board. Uh, but it's really incumbent between them two, not so much the city. Did I say that correctly, Doug?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Okay. Uh, Andrew?
Does, sorry, Mayor Dan. Um, and maybe I was confused by Brian's comments earlier. I mean, there was some pretty, uh, concern, there was a lot of concern having the requirement in the PUD, you know, item 4A, which is the action for this evening. And I think if that is going to impinge on the ability of the developer to perform and make this project work, if we can't figure out the cul-de-sac with the third property owner, the third party here, um, I think it might be worthwhile for some sort of discussion tonight, at, at least.
Oh, certainly. We, we expected to have discussion, but like I said, at planning, um, we did not deny it. We sent it up to this level. So the stu- the discussion could continue and possibly give him more time into January to have those discussions with the third party.
If, if you move this forward, though, tonight, Mayor, with 4A in, it is a requirement to figure that out to the satisfaction of SUEPAC and to...
Correct. And, and, and bottom line is, the, it came down to whose responsi- responsibility is it? And planning commission very strongly did not want that imposed on the third party. That they wanted it clear that it's Frontline's responsibility.
I, I totally would agree with that, and maybe just some, some conversation points. Um, I, I reviewed the meeting. I had a conversation with planning staff and, and, and the engineering staff, and it seems really odd that the ability to, well, let me, let me back up. What Doug said and led with was completely appropriate. The staff bringing forward the development requirements that we have, uh, for this cul-de-sac, uh, for these public improvements and the dedication to the public serves a great purpose. We have long-range plans, uh, we have officially mapped streets, we have comprehensive plans, we also have strategic plans. And all of those things need to jive in the way we go about making decisions. And I think this is a unique enough situation for us to have a conversation about, maybe this isn't the standard course of action. The officially mapped streets are important because we want to, you know, A, have an efficient transportation pattern and land use and development pattern for our community. And we want the developments to be able to pay for, instead of the general taxpayers, to pay for those improvements that help both A and B above. And it, when I reviewed the meeting, uh, from the plan commission and the requirements, we had conversation about this, and it seemed really odd that the ability for the developer to perform with the requirement that they work out something with a third party, that's, or a, a neighbor, that's beyond their control to control that outcome, that the city should really give some pause about whether the requirement is there. And the, my basic analysis, I did not drill into it as far as the planning team and, you know, of course. But what struck out, or kind of stuck out to me was the property owner owns the property, Frontline owns the property, they are not, they do not need an improved cul-de-sac for their development. SUEPAC doesn't need an improved cul-de-sac for the future development of property, or they don't know yet. And we don't want to impinge, the first thing, we don't want to make any requirements or demands or incumbences on SUEPAC, right? Um, but what I, I would hope we would be able to have a conversation about is, is there a better way to go about the property hanging in the balance of a successful negotiation between two parties? Maybe the city is better equipped in the future if it has those conversations with SUEPAC, uh, as they look to develop their property or sell their property to a, a different entity or whatever the case may be, and get that cul-de-sac constructed in some way. Um, you know, the functional, and, uh, talking with the engineering staff, and kind of this is my basic analysis, there is no functional improvement to the construction of this cul-de-sac. There's no functional improvement for us requiring of the, as part of this PUD, for that cul-de-sac to be constructed. And the developer of the property cannot control the outcome of those conversations to say, we did everything you said, now we get to develop our property. So we're kind of stuck in, in that. And, and I think maybe the city is better positioned to have those conversations with, with SUEPAC in the future, or maybe the cul-de-sac is really never required because, again, there's no functional improvement to, uh, the improvement of the cul-de-sac as, as we're requiring here in the...
So real quickly, Doug's gonna respond and really put this in better terms than I probably can. When we're at planning, we are under the assumption, or we were, we were understanding this, that it's actually required by the city to have that right away and that turnaround for plowing and things like that. That's why there's a temporary cul-de-sac there now, that it can't end in a dead end. A plow truck would have difficulty turning around without going onto private property. So, that was it. Whether it was on their property or somewhere else, it, it was incumbent on them. Um, to your second point, you know, we totally agree with you at planning, that we did not want to encumber SUEPAC to have to figure this out. It's not their issue. So if it did become a, a solid no from them, they, they reached impasse with it, it would really fall on Frontline to figure out how to do that on their property. And then, of course, they would deed that to the city, but Doug, say it right.
No, I think you said it very well, Mayor. I mean, the, the, maybe just to add some nuance to that. And if you drive down Ridgeview Drive today, which our plow drivers do, which occasionally I'm sure our, our fire and police do, you can turn around there. It is on a temporary cul-de-sac, on a temporary easement on a property which is owned by SUEPAC. Uh, the cul-de-sac, and I'll let Matt speak to this, is not designed to city standards, uh, and perhaps wouldn't need a lot to make that happen, but it is a temporary cul-de-sac and a temporary easement. And the, the right thing to do is to finish that off in a complying cul-de-sac. The way you go about doing that certainly is a legitimate subject for debate and discussion, and a very, probably a great policy discussion as to how you might want to do a public-private partnership to make that happen. But I, I, I don't know that I'm comfortable with the argument being, well, it's just okay if we leave it as it is. Because remember, if we leave it as it is, you are encumbering that property with a temporary easement, even though it's been that way for decades.
I, I was not suggesting that we just make the policy determination to say that it's okay to leave it the way it is. I'm saying for this, an equitability argument, to make a requirement that two neighbors agree on something, otherwise you can't do what it is you think is best in accordance with our zoning and all of the entitlements that we have, I think that's unfair. And the city is in a better position to work with SUEPAC at a time and point in the future, when it determines what it wants to do with that property, uh, to, to elicit the outcome that the city is requesting of the developer, which the developer can't ultimately, on his or her own volition, perform on. That's, 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 we're in, we're, we're, we have a city standard, but we need to ask ourselves why and what is that standard accomplishing. That, that's my point.
So, and just from, you know, for the planning commissioners, the conversation that we had there, it was that that cul-de-sac, again, we have the temporary one... that we had there, it was that that cul-de-sac, again, we have the temporary one there, it had to be there. And when the former development came forward, they put it onto their property, and that's the drawing you see to my left or to the audience's right, going forward on the property. Of course, you can see what their proposal is with the parking and complications. So they asked to move it backwards, which encumbered the third party, definitely. From our point of view, even though we require it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's our requirement as a city, it was going to go there and they were going to, we were just going to give them time to do it. Now, if they failed and hit impasse, this is kind of the conversation, they'd have to come back and figure out how to do it on their property and then of course, deed that over to the city at some point. So they really wanted to take a swing at it with the third party to try to work something out. And the third party wasn't disagreeable to have conversations, but I don't know where that would lead.
Yeah, and I think that's fair. And I'm sure Brian will speak, Attorney Randall will speak to that. And I was glad to see that in his opening remarks that he, you know, he sees that there's a path forward and that we're all working to go down that path. And again, it's, you know, whether it's on the Ridge Drive property or on the SUEPAK property, I mean, the cul-de-sac should be completed. And, you know, once you arrive at that conclusion, it's how you get there, it could diverge into a number of different partnerships or what have you. But I think it's the one point, and I know that this is a bit confusing, but the only reason why it's been confusing is because the property owners are proposing to take it off his property and to somebody else's.
Yes, go ahead Ken.
As a layman, a non-Planning commission member thankfully.
Yeah, we went on about this.
Yeah, I look at this Doug, and I'm really not sure, I'm not sure if this condition exists many times in this year or not, but it strikes me as unusual that we, we really care about putting a cul-de-sac in a property that terminates in a landlocked, I mean, the property that, that road and cul-de-sac will serve, will serve no one else other than Mr. Schleter's developments. I'm not sure why the, and I can't imagine, I'm not going to impose restricted, a condition on someone like that, just to make sure we can snowplow, that just back up the truck and plow it the other direction or something.
That's again...
Which we can, in its current condition, we can do all of the above.
It just strikes me as unusual that we, it's not, it's not going to serve anybody to impose a condition of an improved cul-de-sac. So it really, and it defeats the purpose of bringing the best value out of the parcel we're considering developing. I'm really on the fence in terms of the whole prospect of requiring a cul-de-sac here. I mean, I'm looking at, you know, the satellite here, like, you know, you guys have said that we've had a longstanding operation of a temporary eas, a temporary cul-de-sac and a temporary easement for a long time. So it's, obviously we can't require SUEPAK to agree to that. But I don't, I don't see the need generally, from a global standpoint, I don't see the need to actually go down this path at all personally. Brian, you look like you want to say something, so.
Oh, that's against...
No virus, I promise.
All right, you heard it folks.
Briefly, to, everybody is correct. Andrew, thank you for your comments. Mayor, thank you for comments. To be honest, at Plan Commission, time kills deals. And we looked at that condition and we promised that we would try to work through that. But we felt as though if we tried to argue it with staff in advance or from the podium, it would just delay our project. And what we want to be is under construction in the spring, which means we need the PUD amended, we need the site and building plan approved in January, we need the DNR to process our wetlands application, we need to put out to bid, and of course, address financing through all of that and be under construction. So we promised to work through that. And we are doing that. John, after that meeting, met with SUEPAK. They are on holiday right now in Germany, so they weren't able to be here. But we are in that tough spot. As Doug's both bringing this up, I don't know if you can all see that, I didn't know if we needed to address everything. So the third slide Doug, that's our site plan. People have talked about that a little bit. I also had a slide that showed the dense trees and everything that we want to do for the neighbors. But again, that's a future discussion. Here's what I want to focus everyone on. When we talk about the cul-de-sac and the official map and where it is and on whose property, this is Ridgeview Drive right now as the existing cul-de-sac, which is on right-of-way, Ridgeview Drive is 70 feet wide of right-of-way, that the, let me just look at the CSM numbers. CSM 7884 from 2006 is when the SUEPAK prior owners dedicated Ridgeview Drive to end at our property line. I think the only one in this room that was around in 2006 per the meeting minutes was Doug. But Catherine, thank you for sharing the meeting minutes and the meeting packets. My colleague Katie was looking at all this stuff from 2006. At that time, the city approved the expansion for the SUEPAK building to the west, required Ridgeview to be dedicated 70 feet wide that ends at the property lines. That's why you see the little barricade right there. And in the certified survey map, there is a temporary easement to the city's benefit for the public for that cul-de-sac right there. And today, the snowplows turn around on that cul-de-sac. Today, John tells me stories about there's a fire hydrant over there, that swimming pool trucks, tankers go and they fill up. And that actually helps the city because it helps to flush the water system. And Doug, if you can go to the next slide, today, SUEPAK, that's their driveway on the right, this next slide will show you, now I'm looking north, or Google Earth is looking north, SUEPAK is on the left. And that cul-de-sac, as it exists today, also works to access their truck docks and the rest of their yard. If you can imagine, if you bulb that cul-de-sac out into their property, it wouldn't work for their current configuration. And as you've seen from Doug showing that map and the overlay of our site plan, it really starts to pinch our building. And we're trying to maximize the taxable value, keep our building and our parking lots to the north, away from the neighbors on the south. So Truck Country, and I guess I'm somewhat responsible for that because I represented them when they were trying to develop the parcel, and they put that official map line on this parcel. They moved it because that worked for the Truck Country site plan. But now we're showing you a new site plan, trying to maximize our value, but also keep ourselves away from the neighbor and an existing condition that does work for everyone. And maybe someday, when Lot 2, currently owned by SUEPAK, is being developed, that could be when the remainder of the dedication could occur. To me, the quick answer and the easy thing and what would delight us is taking 4A out of the ordinance tonight, knowing that we still have to come back on the official map amendment, this very issue that's germane tonight, but not technically on the agenda, and knowing that we still have to come back with the site and building plan. That will give John continued time to talk to SUEPAK, talk to city engineering, keep working through this issue. But in a way, a belt and suspenders and that it's on 4A right now requires us to deal with it at the PUD stage. So I know it's been a lot, goes back to 2006. I enjoy reading old meeting minutes. I enjoy looking at staff packets. Doug Seymour, Jeff Fortin signing off on that. And honestly, just seeing what has worked for everyone to date, it's not like it's an illegal cul-de-sac. Yes, it's called a temporary cul-de-sac, but it's been 18 years temporary. So there's a case to be made that maybe it's okay to continue on, but we are going to continue working on it over the next four weeks so that when we're back in front of you, we have at least updates, if not answers. Thank you for indulging me with the pictures, but I just, it is a confusing issue. We're talking about map, lines on a map that don't exist because the cul-de-sac exists in reality off the map. And it is what it is. So we're trying to work through it. We wanted to minimize the time and expense on us. And it would, though, put us into a road building and property acquisition and design phase that we really weren't expecting.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one question? So with the existing right-of-way that we have right now, is the, is the temporary cul-de-sac, does the temporary cul-de-sac fit in the existing right-of-way?
If you can go to the next slide Doug, I think it's the same graphic that Doug has been showing to answer your question. Hopefully, pictures will tell it. That graphic, which JSD drew, shows, oh, one too far. Can you go back Doug? That's just showing how a truck does work for an offset cul-de-sac. Exhibit B. So what this map shows is our site plan as we propose. The dark black line is the official map currently drawn cul-de-sac that Truck Country had approved. And the green one shows, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but it probably shows if the cul-de-sac were widened to be an official cul-de-sac. It's not an as-built drawing right now, but that's why I give you pictures to show you what's as-built. So this one shows roughly where the existing cul-de-sac temporary on the CSM exists, although that's probably a little wider than what it is in reality per those pictures.
Does the current pavement that's out there, the temporary cul-de-sac, fit in the existing right-of-way?
No.
As of today?
No, that's why on CSM...
I know the officially mapped larger, better standard, what, how we would build a cul-de-sac today is why the official map amendment is required other than moving it. I mean, it needs to get bigger.
Right.
I think there's a way, just to sum up my comments, I think there is a way, over time, that we can determine whether we build, a cul-de-sac is needed, or we build a cul-de-sac that doesn't harm the property owner, that doesn't harm SUEPAK, and that does not harm the city of Oak Creek. If one is required in the future, I think there's a lot of time to figure out how we can, how we can go about constructing that if it's in the best interest for, you know, of the public, of the motorists. I, I just, this is a bigger debate to have, but I just want to make sure we're not doing things because lines on a map may dictate that we should. And if it doesn't really have a practical application for anybody at this point, that's my two cents.
I think the quick answer is, the easement the city has on CSM, on the last page, CSM 7884 from 2006, could not accommodate an official city spec cul-de-sac today. But it obviously accommodates the as-built cul-de-sac that exists in reality today. But that's what I was just conferring with Andrew, that we've looked at what the city's spec is and the easement the city has, and it doesn't fit right now, but maybe then we're talking about acquiring 10 more feet or negotiating for 10 more feet or something like that. And again, that's something we would absolutely work with city engineering on of what is truly required for a cul-de-sac. Most importantly though, right-of-way touches our property line and we are not landlocked. We have Ridgeview Drive that ends, as shown on this, at our property line. So we don't need the cul-de-sac to access our property. And we'd also talk to Chief Kresik and let his fire trucks turn around on our property all day long if that's what they'd like to do.
Yeah, as far as engineering, we'd be open to working with the applicant on what there would be required by the city and what would be needed at minimum. So whether our design standards are, I believe, 50 some feet per radius, we have reduced those to accommodate whatever the vehicles are needed in that as far as turnaround. So we have reduced those. So we are open to working with applicants and the needs and the requirements that are for that specific area.
Doug, if we, if this provision is removed from this particular document, how many times, how many, how many opportunities in the next couple of cycles are we going to...
I think that's, that's, when you're, it all boils down to that is, I mean, by removing out of the conditions and restrictions, it doesn't, again, you still have the opportunity to, to create a condition there which is acceptable to both parties of whether it's through the site plan or whether it's through the development agreement. It's, at this point though, I think the, given that what I understand to be some very legitimate discussion and debate amongst the council, that it might be the most appropriate action to just remove that from the PUD. And with the recognition that, you know, the right thing to do is to have a fully compliant, built-to-standard pavement section there that allows for, for emergency vehicles, for snowplows, for traveling public, and that there may be more than one way of going about making that happen. So get rid of 4A.
I mean, I'm not overselling here, but if the fire department isn't requiring it as of today's conditions, the engineering department isn't, there's no functional improvement to a widened or higher standard cul-de-sac, this development certainly isn't requiring that. The flashpoint in the future may be that the future development of the SUEPAK development, whatever they want to do there, may require a wider cul-de-sac. My hunch is that it won't. And we're having a lot of conversation over, you know, are we trying to preserve something that we may never need? And my suggestion is, we as a city are better equipped with better tools to get that constructed or elicit the construction of that, if it's required in the future, and not put the onus on, on this development at this time. Because if the negotiations are at impasse, we're going to come back here, we're going to say, "You can't develop your property with the significant investment, all because of 4A couldn't be satisfied." And we're probably going to think seriously about, about, you know, eliminating 4A as a requirement anyway. So I'm suggesting, I think we have a lot of other opportunities and options to get the outcomes that everybody wants here and have 4A go away now.
Well, once again, from a planning perspective, when we went through this, the applicant requested the time to work with the third party. That way, the city could keep consistency in their standards and requirements going forward. Now, whether that'll ever be needed or not needed, SUEPAK decides to develop their property and they need that land, and it prohibits development there, or would they be required to then be on the hook for the financial burden of it? Or do they go back to Frontline if Frontline still owns the building? It'd be nice to, at least from Planning's perspective, we were going to give the applicant the time to figure it out before, if they hit impasse, they'd come back because they thought they could get that done. You know, ultimately, it's going to be council's decision.
Given the times of the essence, I think striking 4A is probably an appropriate step.
Can you go to the side?
I agree with Jim. Striking 4A would be appropriate to then, down the road, give us something in writing so I can wrap myself around this, this time we spent on a, on a future agenda item.
Better solution, refining this particular requirement in our ordinance.
I'm assuming that if we, Jim's suggestion to strike 4A is simply a matter so that we can move forward with the item tonight, correct? And then 4A kind of deals with the cul-de-sac and we're going to deal with that on a separate meeting?
Some solution will need to be found.
Yeah, right. But we, we strike 4A, we can move forward and...
But I want to be clear that striking 4A doesn't mean that the temporary cul-de-sac is, is not going to be, something's going to be required there. Does that then put it in the city's hands, once Frontline finishes their project and SUEPAK comes in? I just feel striking that is a problem.
That's where Planning was at, to give them time to try to work it out between the two.
But knowing that if you need that additional time, that if you don't work that out, then that could be additional time in this process.
Well, I, I think part of the problem is the fact that, you know, this, keeping the provision in the document as it states, makes the entire development incumbent on an agreement between outside parties that necessarily aren't aligned. We don't, we don't know that. They may have other ambitions, we don't know. So the thought is, if you, if you keep the, if you keep the condition in the, in the document, the PUD as it's particularly stated, you're relying on this particular development moving forward, which the city desires, and I think it's good for the community, incumbent on about two parties that we don't control.
Maybe, I'm, I'm sorry.
Assuming we can, we give staff and the property owners and everybody, everybody involved, time to figure out if, what makes sense here, I think is the appropriate way to move forward.
I think maybe the, the cause of, not of the cause, but it's just a very legitimate discussion and one that should take place. But I think that a specific reference to a cul-de-sac or any public works facility or infrastructure facility, it isn't typical when we talk about development agreements. Development agreements cover public improvements. So whether 4A, if 4A wasn't in there tonight, and it's not in the ordinance that you adopt, that doesn't preclude engineering from bringing forth a development agreement that says, "Hey, council, you did not approve an official map amendment there. There's a cul-de-sac on this property, we're going to require this cul-de-sac to be constructed." This, to your point Alderman Kerkowski, this allows us to move forward, allows those discussions to take place in the background. You know, I think it certainly would have been more prescriptive from the city's perspective to kind of lay down what we expect from this, but by no means is it absolutely required because I think that, I mean, that can take place, you know... can take place, you know, subsequent to the adopted, of, adoption of the official map, if that's what this council chooses to do in January. So I don't think we're losing anything by not having 4A in there.
Just one last thing on SUD PAC. Great corporate partner, great partner in the city, they've been great to work with. They may just say, we can't ascribe any notion of what we want to do with, we love your project, we love you, but we're just not quite sure what this property should be in the future. It's enough, no skin off the developer or the, or, or any assessment of the development, we just don't know yet. And then we're at that impasse, and that's just too, I guess, we, we might, we might expect that they should, they should say that.
Incorrect. And that discussion kind of happened at, at planning when they were here, and Frontline was kind of like, well, then if, if it has to stay as it is, there would have to be a redesign. So that was what, that's what was agreed upon at planning.
Yes, this does not, I mean, removal of 4A does not preclude any improvements on that temporary cul-de-sac area either. So, you know, it, that still remains, that will still be there after this project is completed, if it's been approved by this council. So there still will be that functionality of that road, and it's, as it functions now. Well, SUD PAC would have to come back here for that request, and you would have to approve that at that point, if they decided to develop that portion of land, which at that point, we could, you know, there could be the discussions on that site improvements, on what would happen with that cul-de-sac. So this does not eliminate any of your options in the future. I think Andrew said that exactly. So doing this just moves this project along, still provides us with those options in the future, we so choose to make those.
May I, uh, I hate to take another kick at it, but just kind of echoing, I mean, if there were, trying to balance Alderwoman Marshall's concerns, and I guess reading between the lines, some concern about losing track of this item, I mean, if there were some security assurance to amend the language, and I say this with a big glacier of salt, I mean, if there is consideration for, for aid to read access to the property from Ridgeview Drive shall be in conformance with all city design standards and requirements, period. I don't know that that adds or really subtracts anything, but it does retain some of that language. So I think that there's a-
Well, that's, makes it subject to, rather than subjective, we're attempting to give it some subjectivity here.
If it's to be, then it's not saying anything different than what it would need to be, I guess is the point.
I mean, it's subject, I mean, that, that particular phraseology says it's our standards, whereas removing it allows it to be a little more fluid.
Right. Providing options, trying to balance what everyone's trying to do. I think that ultimately, it's been said, it's a policy decision in terms of how we move tonight, and as long as it's fully on the table, that this won't be a lost issue.
There'll be more discussions, and we'll obviously have a development agreement later and, uh, at some point, so.
There'll be an infrastructure development agreement.
Okay.
If, if there's public improvements, correct?
Or public improvements.
And the, and as, as Doug has stated, this still has to come forward for official map amendment. So there's still time for the developer to, to work with SUD PAC to see what happens. So there's opportunities still. You're not closing that door.
Melissa, just in summary, are you saying that just leaving it in or taking it out is irrelevant?
That wasn't my intention with my comments, by any means. Um, I think that would question why we have it at all. I think there's, I think it's giving credence to where the developer is in the process, what the conversations are with the adjacent property owners, and I think the matter being before the council tonight, to move something forward. And I think there's certainly a desire to do that. You've heard from our city administrator fully, having had those conversations with staff, and then certainly from planning and engineering, and then certainly from those who have sat in on, um, plan commission discussions as well. So I wouldn't say that it's indifferent, but I think it's a path forward to move, and then give us the grace to allow the parties to move with what is going to work, versus trying to remember to uncover some language that we've approved, that we knew was problematic, if that makes sense. My only mention was trying to massage some language for the security or the assurance of, we didn't forget about that piece. I really don't believe that there's any chance that we will.
I don't think, uh, planning or engineering will be able to forget about this in the future.
Again, what's before you is really, in conclusion, what the applicant had asked for at planning.
Both, both planning and engineering have said, uh, they don't see a problem with striking 4A, so, uh, that should give us some assurance.
Been the nature of the conversations, changing all along, so.
No, not striking. Planning did not strike it. Planning said, give them the opportunity to work with a third party.
Again, we're, we're back to the times of the essence, so.
A-again, and that's on them in January. If they could not work it out, then they were gonna have to do a redesign on their property. And that's, that was final agreement at planning before it came up here. So I just want to be clear about that, where planning was at on this.
Yep.
So, further discussion, or are we just all thoroughly confused?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
No confusion.
Then I guess we can entertain a motion.
We're on six, Danny?
Oh, jeez.
Do we, do we call for, do we call for the ordinance already?
All right.
Yes, we're on item six, Ken.
Great, cool. And then Gail, move to approve ordinance number 3089, rezoning a portion of the property at 1850 West Oakwood Road to M1 Manufacturing and establish a planned unit development. And the property is at 9970 10020 and 10040 South 20th Street and a portion of 1850 West Oakwood Road, subject to the, uh, common council reports, striking section 4A of the conditions and restrictions.
Kurkowski will second. Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Okay, yeah. Uh, moving on, item-
Your eyes glaze over, Don, if you're done?
Item seven is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by John Schleter, Frontline Commercial Real Estate, uh, for the properties at 9970 10020 and 10040, South 20th Street and 1850 West Oakwood. Doug?
So no need to convey a lengthy preamble to this. This lot creates the, the larger parcel that would allow for the frontline development.
So it's the southern portion we're talking about?
Yes.
Just to be clear. Um, any questions, comments to that? We touched on it briefly on the last item. Um, the applicant did have meetings with the neighbors. Uh, once the neighbors understood it, it's proposed, even though it's M1, and it's gonna be part of a whole development, there's really no development going on there. It's gonna stay natural and help with stormwater management. Uh, seeing no discussion, uh, motion on seven.
Gail, move to approve resolution 12465-121923, approving a certified survey map submitted by John Schleter, Frontline Commercial Real Estate, for the properties at 9970 10020 and 10040, South 20th Street and 1850 West Oakwood Road.
Guzekowski, you have a second?
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item made as a public hearing to rezone, um, or consider a request by Jason, uh, Atiskey, uh, St. John's Property, Inc., to rezone to LM1 Light Manufacturing and establish a planned unit development on the property at 517 East Rossin Avenue. Applicant is Jason Alkeski, St. John Properties, Inc., property owner is 517 East Rossin Avenue LLC. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is November 15, 2023.
Thank you.
Doug?
Uh, the proposal before the council this evening, uh, for the public hearing is a rezoning of the property at 517 East Rossin Avenue from A1 Limited Agricultural to LM1 PUD. Uh, it should be noted that the original proposal for this planned unit development, uh, called for kind of a hybrid PUD of both B4, which is a general business, and, and M1 manufacturing. In the various discussions between staff and, and the developer, uh, which I, I will say included a number of different iterations of the site plan and, uh, allowed for a, some redesign of the plan, which made it a much better plan. So thank you for that. But we came to the conclusion that that was just too broad, and that the same thing could be accomplished by lending that to the uses that are permitted, uh, in the LM1 zoning district. So in essence, what you're seeing proposed for this property in many ways is reflective of the development in terms of the uses that is happening across the street and the property that they, they have developed north. Uh, they are proposing for four buildings, four single-story buildings, and we've got a concept plan. I can see just for your, uh, information, north is, uh, towards the parking lot, and I know you're looking at it from a different angle, so I won't use directions. Uh, and it, it really is those four, those single-story buildings that allow for research and development, for testing, for, for general service-type uses. And, uh, the proposed use of this property in the manner that it's being proposed is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which does call for this to be a business park. And as we'll discuss, and as the plan commission has discussed, and as we'll discuss moving forward in terms of the site plan approval process, uh, that becomes important as we consider the logical development of the properties to the west of this, which also have, carry that same designation for business park. And that's why considerable time has been spent working with the developer on a entrance road pattern, private roads, that ultimately will allow for the completion and the logical development of those properties to the east. Uh, what you, and I think that we kind of just have some, some, some basic understanding of what the sections will be, very, very consistent with our, our PUD template, uh, in terms of what you can and can't have on those properties. And this is not, uh, uh, this is not heavy manufacturing, this is not warehouse and distribution. These are the smaller, again, these are single-story buildings, uh, and, and I think you'll see, I have a pretty good feel for what will be in these buildings based on what you see happening across a street. We establish those standards, uh, for, for parking, for signage, for landscaping, for lighting. Um, there's a tree preservation plan, and as, as you'll see as we move forward, that, and I can share those plans with you if you, if you wish this evening, extensive landscaping. And the one thing I will note, and I don't know if the applicant is here this evening, they want to elaborate on that, but in the course of, uh, taking a look at this proposal and this concept, uh, the developers did have a neighborhood meeting, uh, which was hosted in concurrence with, uh, Alderman Kurkowski, in which they, they, I think they, they heard a very good cross-section of the neighborhood and what their concerns were. And in response to that, they actually scaled back their development plans and the leasable area of these buildings to increase the setback to the east between these buildings and the properties, uh, the residential properties. So I think that was to be applauded on their part. Uh, I think it provides for a development which is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the goals of that, uh, for a strategic plan for, you know, a thriving business development. Uh, and staff, uh, is generally in support of that, as was the plan commission, and their recommendation to the common council. This being a public hearing, and I just make sure I'm not missing anything in my notes here. Don't think I am. But this being a public hearing, we're asking anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning of the property at 517 East Rossin Avenue, please approach your microphone, give your name and address, and proceed to address your questions or comments. The common council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, this will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Second call, anybody wishing to speak? And third and final call, anybody wishing to speak, please approach your podium, give your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and go on to consideration of the ordinance to rezone to LM1 Light Manufacturing designation and to establish planned unit development for the property at 517 East Rossin. Open it up to, um, council, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I said this before, and, and Doug was, uh, very eloquent with the comments he made. The, there was a commu, community meeting with the developer and myself and, you know, 30, 35, 40 residents, and they put the, put the ease, a lot of the concerns that they had, that what was gonna go in there. And I think, I think the, the, as I said before, the, the major concession that the developer made was to go from a 30-foot setback to 85 feet. And I haven't had any, anything negative from any, any property, adjoining property owners, other than thanks for the meeting, and, uh, it was explained to us very well, and we're, and we're happy with it.
Thank you, Steve.
No questions?
No questions.
Chris?
No. Uh, no, we did go over this at planning. Uh, the neighborhood did turn out. Alderman Kurkowski was here, uh, spoke on it, and, uh, the, uh, the applicant really, um, worked well with the neighborhood, uh, has the berm set up and is controlling the stormwater management, and may even help improve water conditions down there for those other concerns. So, um, I have nothing else to add. So, um, with that said, if there's no further discussion, motion on nine.
Kelski, make a, excuse me, Kurkowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3090, rezoning to LM1 Light Manufacturing and to establish a planned unit development on the property at 517 East Rossin Avenue.
Ritz will second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item 10 is new business, and it's consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment of Matthew Sullivan as the Assistant City Administrator/City Engineer effective January 1st, 2024. Andrew, you gonna take that?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. I can speak real briefly on that. Um, as per the charter ordinance amendments that were made in the end of September here at the common council, as well as the, uh, Building Capacity and Resilience Plan, uh, this is really a, a formal appointment of Matt, uh, as Assistant City Administrator/City Engineer. The only, uh, the only position that was created that requires the common council's appointment at the present time, or confirmation of the mayor's appointment at the present time, uh, is this position as styled Assistant Administrator. You'll have others forthcoming, the Community Development Director, when, uh, they are identified, uh, the Marketing and Public Relations Director, so on and so forth. But this is the, really the only one at this time that, that requires, as it's a new, your confirmation, as it is really a new position in our, uh, city organization.
Okay. Questions, comments? Ken?
Looking forward to, you having the opportunity to grow and get some more responsibility and do what you can for the organization. So appreciate that, congratulations.
Okay. There's no further discussion, motion?
Gail, move to concur with the mayor's appointment of Matthew Sullivan as Assistant City Administrator/City Engineer effective January 1st, 2024.
Guzekowski, you have a second?
Roll call.
Alderwoman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Ritz.
Oh, Ritz, pardon me.
Aye.
Wow.
We're off night tonight.
I know, it is an off night. I'm so sorry.
Yep, go ahead, Steve. Item 11, we're good with the roll call?
Correct.
Okay. Item 11, uh, is consideration of a resolution approving an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement pursuant to Wisconsin statute 66.0301 between the city of Oak Creek and the city of St. Francis for police ambulance, ambulance and fire-related dispatch services. Max?
Max Gigan, uh, Assistant City Administrator/Controller. Uh, so the first of three items is an amendment to our existing intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Francis. Uh, we currently provide dispatch services for them since 2014. Uh, and this amendment is really just clarity. So, uh, the effective date of that agreement was July 1st of 2014, and then it said it was a 10-year agreement.
So, the first of three items is an amendment to our existing intergovernmental agreement with the City of St. Francis. We currently provide dispatch services for them since 2014, and this amendment is really just clarity. So, the effective date of that agreement was July 1st of 2014, and then it said it was a 10-year agreement, which would take you to June 30th of 2024. But there's other, other areas of the agreement that alludes that we provided 10 years of dispatch services to them. So, this is really just clarity that the contract goes through December 31st, 2024, because then the next item would be an intergovernmental agreement that would start January 1st, 2025, so there's no interruption of services for the City of St. Francis. With that, happy to answer questions on the amendment.
Any questions concerning Max? With this particular agreement? Steve, before I call for roll call, do you have any questions regarding the intergovernmental agreement with St. Francis for police, ambulance, and fire-related dispatch services?
I have none, thank you, Mayor.
With that, motion please.
Gail, move to approve resolution 12459-121923 approving the amendment to the intergovernmental agreement pursuant to Wisconsin State statute 66.0301 between the City of Oak Creek and the City of St. Francis for police, ambulance, and fire-related dispatch services.
Marshall, second.
Roll call?
Alderman, Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
And item 12 is consideration of a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement pursuant to Wisconsin State statute 66.0301 between the City of Oak Creek and St. Francis for police, ambulance, and fire-related dispatch services. Max wants to go?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll just give a brief presentation just on the next two items, which are two intergovernmental agreements for dispatch services, one with the City of St. Francis, the other one with the City of Southmore. So, if you have questions, just feel free to ask them as I go about. So, really just kind of want to give a timeline of our current agreement with St. Francis, and then how we got to where we are tonight, talk about the terms of the intergovernmental agreements, talk about our dispatch center, its current staffing model and what is being proposed, and then talk a little bit about how our community is going to be sharing costs for the dispatch center and allocating them based off of the personnel budget, the IT budget, and the operating budget. We'll show a picture of what our current budget is today and what it would have been for 2024 if all three communities are together, and what we would anticipate moving forward. And then briefly, just talk about the benefits of a three-party dispatch center. So, in June of 2014, City of Oak Creek and City of St. Francis approved an intergovernmental agreement for dispatch services at the Oak Creek Dispatch Center, about nine months to implement that, and they started receiving dispatch services in March of 2015. In the spring of 2021, one of the things that we completed was a financial analysis just looking at the current St. Francis dispatches, services, IGA, and it was part of that analysis really identified an inequitable cost share amongst the two parties, which led us to our next step in June of 2021. Oak Creek formally notified St. Francis of its intent not to automatically renew the intergovernmental agreement for the additional 10-year term. And again, this is not due in any part to the City of St. Francis and their participation at the dispatch center, but this really was the mechanism to give us the ability to renegotiate terms with a more equitable cost share. In the fall of 2021, we held a meeting of South Shore communities. We discussed the possibility of a shared dispatch center amongst all four. Some of the challenges we were trying to overcome is space needs. If you've been to our current dispatch center, it's pretty small. In conferring with leadership at Police Department, it'd be really challenging to have four communities served out of that small space. In April of 2022, South Milwaukee expressed interest in joining the Oak Creek Dispatch Center. In July of 2022, worked through some personnel and IT needs assessments and cost-sharing methodologies with South Milwaukee. Should they join the center, wanted to come to an agreement with South Milwaukee. We don't currently serve them, but really trying to build out the framework that if we're going to make this a multi-party agreement and have more than just Oak Creek and St. Francis participate, is it something that all parties can agree to? So, once South Milwaukee had tentatively agreed to a cost allocation methodology, next presented a proposal to the City of St. Francis and their officials with terms of the new 10-year intergovernmental agreement that would commence for them January 1st, 2025. In the fall of 2022, really for the next year, City of Oak Creek and St. Francis officials negotiated a new 10-year intergovernmental agreement. And then in October of this year, we met with South Milwaukee, and they officially expressed a desire to pursue intergovernmental agreement with Oak Creek for dispatch services. We ensued contract negotiations then. The City of St. Francis did ratify this new 10-year intergovernmental agreement on December 5th of this year, and the South Milwaukee Common Council approved an 11-year intergovernmental agreement. We'll talk about why that's an 11-year in a few slides, but they did approve it at their December 12th meeting. And tonight, we're asking the Oak Creek Common Council to approve both of these intergovernmental agreements, both with St. Francis and Southmore. So, I'll just talk about the terms that are shared amongst both parties and their intergovernmental agreements. So, the big change is being that we'll be allocating all operating costs based off the adopted dispatch center budget. Previously, St. Francis was paying a fixed amount each year and went up by 2%. And the challenge we saw with that is, as the environment changes, costs change, inflation's more than 2%. The City of Oak Creek was having to pay a larger share year after year because our costs were not going up just 2%. So, if we're allocating based off of the adopted budget, as the environment changes, costs inflate at a higher rate, we're all going to be sharing in those additional costs. The caveat being is that we do have a provision that neither of the other two parties would see an increase of 150% over that 10-year period. So, it really gives us about, you know, 5% a year increase in the budget for that 10-year period. We do have some exceptions written in there, so if there's federal, state, or local mandates that cause costs to the center, those would be excluded. So, an example that I can give is if the state decides to reclassify dispatchers as protective service employees. Currently, they're treated as just general employees for the Wisconsin retirement system. You know, our costs as a community and as the budget would go up just because for a protective service employee, we pay about 14.5% for retirement, whereas for general employees, about 7%. We did include those exceptions to protect the City of Oak Creek. However, not having a limit at the top was really a concern for the City of St. Francis, and rightfully so, because, you know, ultimately, it's the Oak Creek Common Council that controls the budget. So, if we were to shift more or allocate more items to the dispatch center budget, we could conceivably increase the other municipalities' cost share and just shift our levy from one budget to the next to really have an negligible impact on us. We did agree to allocate all capital costs based off either the number of jurisdictions served at the center or each jurisdiction used. And this is where you're going to see the largest of cost savings. There's a lot of fixed costs just to operate a dispatch center regardless if you take 50 calls or 10,000 calls or 100,000. And if we can share those costs, not just as one community, but three, it's going to be more advantageous for all of us. So, one of the things that we know is coming up is 2025, 2026, we have to replace the radio system at the dispatch center. It's probably a million dollars. So, if we were to go about it by ourselves, Oak Creek would pay a million dollars. If we've got two or three partners, in this case, three, we would each be paying 333,000. So, certainly adding that third community, if we were to do a 50-50 cost share, if it was just us two communities, in this instance, we're actually saving 167,000 just on that one project. And then we do establish a budgetary committee, and that provides recommendations on the dispatch centers operating in capital budgets. Again, you know, we, as the City of Oak Creek, can't have other communities approving our budget, so this is really the control that the other communities, they can be advised as to what the budget is, as well as that long-term capital improvement plan and provide recommendations. The City of South Milwaukee's IGA has a couple of additional terms in it, given that they'll be a new participant at the dispatch center. So, it does have an effective date of January 1st of 2024, and that allows for one year for them to integrate with our dispatch center. So, we have to convert over their data, integrate their radios, so on and so forth. So, really, we have a year to implement with the goal of having South Milwaukee receive dispatch services January 1st, 2025, which would then align with the City of St. Francis' contract. Additionally, South Milwaukee is solely responsible for all costs to commence dispatch services at the center. So, again, those implementation items, those are at the sole cost of the City of South Milwaukee. It's estimated about $150,000 for them to join the center. All four full-time dispatchers that are employed by the City of South Milwaukee as of today and who apply to be a dispatcher for the City of Oak Creek shall be provided the opportunity for employment at our dispatch center, and it's a little bit more of a streamlined application process. Certainly, if you talk to our dispatch manager, having some of those individuals come over to the City of Oak Creek is going to be beneficial, as we're all going to have to learn about the nuances of that community, their roadway patterns, you know, how they interact with their police and fire agencies, so on and so forth. So, really, having some of that institutional knowledge of those employees is going to really be helpful and make this transition easier for the City of South Milwaukee. And then again, dispatch services would commence on January 1st, 2025. So, the dispatch center staffing model, we currently have what we say a 3-3-3 minimum staffing model, so first, second, and third shift have a minimum staff of three. We currently have 19 dispatchers, two dispatch supervisors, 17 dispatchers. The 2024 budget did include the addition of a third dispatch supervisor, and we have a minimum staffing of three because we have three dedicated channels at the dispatch center, one for the Oak Creek Police Department, one for the St. Francis Police Department, and then a shared channel between the Fire Department and the EMS departments for the City of Oak Creek and the City of St. Francis. And the reason there's a shared channel is the dispatching for fire and EMS is a little bit different in that we notify the fire departments of the emergency, and then they self-dispatch from their stations. So, with the approval of both of these intergovernmental agreements, what we would see in 2025 is dispatch center would implement 5-5-4 minimum staffing, so first and second shift would have a minimum five personnel for third shift. Most of our call volume comes on first and second shift, and that we would be increasing the number of dispatchers to 28. So, the addition of a third partner in South Milwaukee would be hiring eight full-time dispatchers. Three of those would be dispatch supervisors, 25 would be dispatchers. And then we would have four dedicated channels, one for Oak Creek Police Department, one for St. Francis Police Department, one for South Milwaukee Police Department, then all of those three fire departments can share a channel as well. And then on first and second shift, this really allows an additional dispatcher who can kind of float between the three communities as sees fit. You know, one of the things that our center started doing just in the last year or so is taking cell phone calls. Previously, all cell phone calls went to Milwaukee County, and then they got routed to the dispatch center where we take them directly. You know, in the short time we've been doing it, we've seen a 25%, 30% increase in Oak Creek call volume. So, you know, bringing on two other communities with the anticipation they're taking their cell phone calls, really see the need for that additional body to handle that volume. Although not technically part dedicated to a singular channel, they'll be able to respond to any of those needs. So, this slide is a little bit difficult to see, but we talked about the, how costs would be allocated based off the annual operating budget, and the way we break it out is by personnel costs, IT costs, then operating costs. Operating costs are very nominal, we're talking utilities, maintenance, supplies, things of that nature. So, personnel costs make up 91% of the dispatch center budget, and we would be splitting it based off a three-year rolling average of each community's equalized value, population, and call volume. So, what you'll see kind of in these tables here, you can see, for example, the City of Oak Creek in our equalized value over the past three years, South Milwaukee, St. Francis, and then a share percentage. So, for equalized value, that three-year average, City of Oak Creek, we're about 67% of it, City of South Milwaukee is about 22%, City of St. Francis at 11%. You can see for population, very similarly, our three-year average, Oak Creek is about 56% of the population, South Milwaukee is about 31%, and City of St. Francis about 14%. And then for call volume, Oak Creek's about 54%, 27% for South Milwaukee, St. Francis at 19%. And the reason the cost allocation methodology looked at these factors, certainly equalized value can be a predictor of the assets in your community and the needs for response. Population, again, if you have more population, that could potentially drive call volume, and then certainly call volume is a great indicator of use. But if you looked at call volume just in and of itself, if it could spike one year to the next, it could be pretty volatile. So, we were trying to come up with cost allocation methodology that was fair and equitable for all parties, but with a three-year rolling average so that no community would see a huge burden in one year or the next. For example, if there's a huge spike in call volume in a community or a huge increase in equalized value, that it would kind of be phased in over time, so the communities can plan and absorb as cost shift. IT and operating costs. IT costs would be allocated amongst the parties based off of either each jurisdiction's use of the service. So, there are certain IT items, like IT software licenses, we know are per squad, per fire apparatus, per person. We have a pretty detailed spreadsheet that would show that. So, you would just pay, each community would just pay that cost that's specific to them. There's then also IT costs that are just necessary to have a dispatch center, and again, that's regardless if you're taking 50 calls or 100,000 calls. And those aren't really specific to jurisdictions, so we agreed to split those equally amongst the parties. And, you know, the largest example we'll give is ProPhoenix, our dispatch and report management system. It costs about $70,000 a year. Currently, we would split that three ways, so we would pay a third, St. Francis, South Milwaukee. And again, this is where a community like South Milwaukee is going to realize the cost savings in that they currently pay $70,000 for their own license. Now, they're only paying, you know, $24,000, $23,000. And then operating costs would be split equally amongst the parties as well. And again, these total about $30,000, so it's about 1% of the budget really nominal, utility, supplies, maintenance. So, just looking at the dispatch center's budget, so the adopted budget for next year is $2,365,035, so about $2.37 million. If you were to look at just the two parties who currently utilize the dispatch center, Oak Creek's paying $2 million, and $2.03 million, and our levy is about $1.85 million. You can see the City of St. Francis is currently paying $280,000. Again, that's the last year of their fixed-price contract. We do have some smaller reimbursable items as well. And then what you see in this table down here is the cost allocation methodology, and we've put together a projected budget if we're to include the City of South Milwaukee as well. That projected budget, you can see the top line here, $3 million, essentially $3.17 million if we were to serve South Milwaukee next year. And the reason we looked at it that way is, you know, certainly the most predictable of costs, but then that's going to help us understand what the cost share would be amongst those three communities. So, you'll see under the terms of these two intergovernmental agreements, Oak Creek's cost share would have been $1.8 million, South Milwaukee about $850,000, St. Francis at $500,000. And again, this is just a And again, this is just a table showing the top, or this table's the same as the previous one, showing the cost share. Uh, then you can see, uh, cost share on a percentage basis, so, uh, Oak Creek would be responsible for fifty-seven percent of all costs. South Milwaukee twenty-seven, Saint Francis sixteen. Uh, and then lastly, just want to talk about, you know, what are the benefits of, you know, adding a new partner in South Milwaukee to our dispatch center? Uh, certainly I touched on it a little bit briefly, but just increased economies of scale. Uh, that will result in cost efficiencies, especially IT costs and large capital projects. Uh, you know, just having additional capacity to respond to large-scale events. Currently, we have minimum staffing of three, you know, if there's four or five calls going on at the same time, you know, dispatchers have to prioritize. Whereas, you know, if we have more people on minimum staff or even additional staff above minimum, you know, our ability to respond to large-scale events or, you know, times, periods where there's multiple calls, uh, not just for Oak Creek or for Saint Francis and South Milwaukee is going to be better, uh, just having more personnel. And then lastly, it gives us increased resiliency at the dispatch center, so, um, you know, as I mentioned, if we add South Milwaukee, uh, we'll be hiring eight additional full-time dispatchers. And really the resiliency being that we can withstand and recover from challenges like staff turnover. So, uh, as I think many of us know, it's a very stressful occupation. I think it was just, it was just a study that said it was like the number eight most stressful occupation in the country. Uh, so turnover is a reality, and I think we recognize that, you know, we do things like look at compensation or employee support services to help sign me that, but reality is we can experience turnover and having a center that has additional personnel will help us respond to that better. And I know, uh, if you talk to our, uh, partner at city of South Milwaukee, that's the biggest challenge they have there. Both for full-time dispatchers, if one of them leaves, they're now having police officers dispatched, and that's taking people off the street. Um, so tonight, uh, what we're asking is two common council actions, ones to adopt resolution one-two-four-six-zero, uh, which would approve the intergovernmental agreement with city of Oak Creek and city of Saint Francis, and then adopt resolution number one-two-four-six-one, which would approve the intergovernmental agreement between city of Oak Creek and South Milwaukee. With that, be happy to answer any questions, but I think before I do, I'd just be remiss if I didn't thank a lot of people. From the city of Oak Creek team, specifically Chief Stacker, our dispatch minister, Jason Boutneck, who's back there if you have questions, um, as well as Melissa Carles, a lot of work in just the last two to three years. Um, and then just our partners at these two communities as well. With that, happy to answer any questions you have.
Hey, thank you, Max. Uh, we'll open it up for questions, comments. Steve?
Well, explain. Thank you.
All right, Jim?
On the personnel side, uh, Oak Creek then, uh, is responsible for hiring all new?
Correct.
And then, uh, you had the hundred and fifty percent ten-year increase.
Yep.
Do you have something like a eight or nine percent fixed, uh, annual increase?
So the way the contract works, there's not a fixed annual increase, it's based off of the budget, and then we share based off of those variables. So, you know, for example, if the overall budget goes up five percent, that doesn't necessarily mean each community's share goes up five percent. Because if Oak Creek's equalized value grew faster than the other two communities, and our call volume went up at a higher percentage than the other two communities, maybe our share this year is five point three percent, and there's a 4.7 of that five percent increase. What the hundred and fifty percent is, is it's really a guarantee that within the ten-year period, they're not going to see more than a fifty percent increase in their price from year one to year ten. And, you know, the reason that was proposed, and that was specifically the city of Saint Francis, was that if the city of Saint Francis has no control over the city of Oak Creek and the common councils' adoption of the budget, you know, there are ways that people can manipulate the budget to increase costs without increasing costs to Oak Creek. So for example, you know, the city of Oak Creek could decide to just allocate Chief Stecker's time, or my time, or Andrew's time into this budget, and we could just shift the tax levy from the general fund to the dispatch budget. And that would increase the budget twenty, thirty percent. And we would be asking our partners to be paying a significant cost of that when, from Oak Creek's perspective, it's a not zero. Uh, it's just math on paper. And, you know, that's where, when that issue was brought to our attention, I recognized it. And if I was the city administrator in either one of their shoes, I would say, yes, this makes sense. But that's where, you know, Oak Creek had to be very deliberate in that position, in that we had to have certain things excluded. Things that are outside of our control had to be excluded because if there's that rate cap, and then someone comes in and year three, the federal government mandates this system that costs two million dollars, you have that rate cap on there. Oak Creek's holding the bag for the rest of it. So, uh, the agreement reads that if it's a federal, state, or local mandate, or anything that's outside of the control of the city of Oak Creek, that they will not reasonably contest those.
And kudos to you, I know you put a lot of work into this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
No, well, explain.
Yeah.
Yeah, Max, I just appreciate that, you know, we've kind of watched this from cheap seats evolve over the past couple of years. Appreciate the legwork you guys have really put into it and the cooperation of the other communities, Jason. Taking on a lot more work, but good for you. Congratulations, all of you. These are great agreements for all communities involved.
Chris?
I, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Hey, Andrew, uh, would you like to say something?
I would.
What you want into this?
Yeah, no, um, I think, uh, Mayor Dan and I had the luxury of really watching this from a distance and, and watching the professionalism of our, of our staff, uh, and it was, it was just brilliant. We'll get back to that, but, uh, this is also a masterclass in good governance. And we were able to, to lead, be a leader in the South Shore as our, as our, uh, as our strategic plan says. Um, but it's also a masterclass in good governance from these other communities, recognizing the fact that they needed to find a better way to serve their residents and their neighbors. So for them to step out and identify the best solution for them, just kudos to the city of South Milwaukee, certainly as our new partner, uh, but the city of Saint Francis for, um, you know, coming along with a pretty significant agreements. Uh, these are additional, very much additional costs to their budget, but they recognize the services that they're receiving in the, in these agreements. Um, you know, Max, you should be really, really proud of this work. Uh, this, this is, this is dozens and dozens and dozens of financial, of hours of financial analysis. Uh, Max led these negotiations because the numbers speak loudly to people. Uh, but with Chief Stecker, uh, Captain Ashenhurst, uh, Jason, uh, Boutneck in our, as, as our dispatch manager, um, you know, Jason, it's not possible for these agreements to come together without the dedicated and, and skilled people we have at dispatch, and, and that's because of your leadership, uh, and you have a lot of work ahead of you. The, we get to, you know, hopefully approve these agreements tonight, but these, uh, if you heard any stories about the Saint Francis implementation, it's actually a rather complicated deal, and I can't even appreciate how complicated it is. But I know, um, there is a reason it takes a year to, to get these communities up and running, and you'll hear some very eloquent terms like locution and things like that that you'll, you'll get into. But, um, again, that I don't have an appreciation for, but, you know, we, we will be teaching our colleagues in the municipal management world about how we did this. Um, I'm sure Max will be giving presentations on this, uh, and you should be, you know, he's good at it. Um, but, but just kudos to everybody for, uh, you know, pulling this together. Now, in, in terms of our residents and your governance as a council, sure, we save some money, we realize economies of scale, that's great. We, we wouldn't do this and go through this whole process just to save money. As Max alluded to, the, the residents in these communities in the South Shore have a much better, more resilient service in what I think outside of water, providing water and, 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 you know, sewer treatment to people. Nine eleven dispatch is the most critical service we provide on a daily basis in the community. Um, without calls getting to our police officers, our firefighter, paramedics can't help people. So, um, this is a critical one, and a lot of, uh, it's, it's a lot of good work that I think, uh, we wouldn't have an appreciation for all what, that went into it, but know that we do. Um, because you got it here tonight and hopefully over the finish line, and, and just thank you. Uh, the, the community is really proud of you for this work.
Well, well said, Andrew, and as Andrew said, we're at the first meeting along with all the other communities. And this really is, uh, an excellent demonstration of intergovernmental cooperation for the betterment of everybody here in the South Shore, without a doubt. Um, and as Andrew kind of put it, you know, we watch from the cheap, cheap seats. And from my point of view, uh, probably the best thing that happened after those initial meetings is, um, myself and some other, uh, elected officials let the people that are really experts in what they do handle it from there. Uh, that came from the dispatch, our chiefs, um, Max, our city administrators all got together. Uh, and there was very little input, interference, should I say, from the electeds going forward. Um, and there were some, there was a leadership change in, in that time too in, in one of the communities. And, uh, to their credit, they held fast to what was best for the residents. They are going to get a great service, so, um, everybody summed it up. This is just an incredibly great job, a really great agreement. And, and one thing that hasn't been mentioned as well that really was instrumental in helping South Milwaukee get here, uh, is IT. Um, our IT department is already in an intergovernmental agreement with South Milwaukee, uh, and they do a fantastic job for them down there. And this is just making sense for taxpayers throughout the South Shore, so, um, we hear a lot of great things of things they've done up on the North Shore. I think people are going to start looking at the South Shore as well, saying, wow, this really works. Um, city should be proud of all of you. Thank you for your work. Uh, with that, if there's no further discussion, uh, we will need a motion separately on both twelve and thirteen.
Marshall will, will move to approve resolution number one-two-four-six-zero dash one-two-one-nine-two-three, approving the intergovernmental agreement pursuant to Wisconsin statute sixty-six point oh-three-oh-one between the city of Oak Creek and the city of Saint Francis for police, ambulance, and fire-related dispatch services.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And item thirteen, I, once again, it's an intergovernmental, of, intergovernmental agreement, um, between the city of Oak Creek and South Milwaukee for police, ambulance, and fire-related dispatch services, different community. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, motion.
Marshall will move to approve resolution number one-two-four-six-one dash one-two-one-nine-two-three, approving the intergovernmental agreement pursuant to Wisconsin statute sixty-six point oh-three-oh-one between the city of Oak Creek and the city of South Milwaukee for police, ambulance, and fire-related dispatch services.
Guzakowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
And item fourteen.
Yes. I will say to Max, I apologize if I derailed any momentum on this by injecting my opinion on cul-de-sacs and officially map streets and any of the above, so I know we, we weren't thinking we would get to this at eight, eight forty, but you did a great job.
Okay, item fourteen will get us to engineering and its consideration of a resolution authorizing recommended road improvement projects be advertised for public bid for rehabilitation in two thousand and twenty-four. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor Matt Sullivan, city engineer. As stated, um, in front of you is consideration, adoption of the resolution. Um, on December twelfth, we took our recommendations to BAPWACA to provide them some feedback and to give you the council's recommendations on what they chose for improvements for two thousand and twenty-four. First of all, I'd like to kind of give a background on our process. As I've done in the past, this is more just kind of a refresher for everyone that's been up on the board and, and the councils. Um, so our roads are rated annually, rated from a one to ten, one being the worst and ten being the best. So we look at the ratings and the ratings are done based on the distresses that you can visually see as you drive down the roads. Typically, um, driving anywhere from five to ten miles an hour with two people, so you have four sets of eyes, or two sets of eyes, four eyes on, on the road kind of describing and, and putting down what distresses we see within those road sections. Those are rated then at that point. So what we do when we gather that information, we look at our road ratings, we look at our budgets. We try to fit what we can and maximize our dollars as efficiently as possible. Typically, we look anywhere from a ratings of four to six or seven is where we try to get our sweet spots, whether we do a rehabilitation or a maintenance procedure. Once you get past a four, um, cost effectively, you'd rather just let it go to a point where you'd reconstruct it. You're not going to make much hay with the money that you put into it. So with that, we provided two options to BAPWACA, option A and option B. Both of those were roughly eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. What we did there is we wanted to make sure that we had somewhat of a cushion, um, on dollars, just in case, um, bidding came in a little high. Everything is estimated as far as cost. We want to get ourselves anywhere from a ten to twelve percent cushion. Um, with that, we also provided alternates, um, on the last thing, I did provide you with updated charts. Um, those alternates would be kind of put in based on additional monies that we have. So we do have grant funding from the state called LRIP. Um, we did, we will be receiving some refunds on that, which is about seventy thousand. We did apply for another cycle for this year, which will be another seventy thousand added to it. We have some leftover funds from this last, uh, project year in two thousand and twenty-three. Those are estimated probably around about a hundred and fifty thousand. So we have a significant amount of money, roughly two hundred, a little over two hundred. So that's why we provided alternates, um, in there to be kind of used at our discretion from what we were given from BAPWACA. One of the points of interest that they wanted to do was add in and have us look at some more roads, not just local, but ones that would carry more traffic and have a higher functional class. So we did add two roads within the alternates, which would, you'll see they're highlighted in your packet. Um, that's Oakwood from Opus over to Howell Avenue, and then Elm Street from Nicholson over to the railroad tracks. Those are roughly a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which would fit nicely within the alternates. They did recommend option B. The difference between option A and option B is substitution from Shepherd and Nicholson. So option A would have Shepherd Avenue, and option B would have Nicholson. Nicholson did carry a little more recommendations or requests from a few other people and other administration based on the condition and complaints that we were receiving. We as engineering are recommending option B as stated by BAPWACA. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those for you.
Steve? I, I, I promise, like Andrew, none of my comments concern a cul-de-sac. Um, however, earlier this year, I, I go back several months earlier this year. Uh, there was an individual in the city who, who used, uh, social media to, uh, complain about the Pacer program that is used for our streets. So I'm going to ask, when I get done talking, to ask, uh, Mike to, uh, or Matt to, uh, explain that Pacer and how it's used industry-wide. The, also made comments about how our list of road improvements are selective based on, uh, road improvements in one subdivision versus another subdivision, and who was getting more money and who might be slighted and, and therefore, I mean, stuff like that. And then the last comment was, well, we, the council, control the purse strings, so to speak, and we could basically write a check for as much money.
speak, and we could basically write a check for as much money as we wanted to, to fix the roads instead of the, you know, million plus that were, that the budget calls for. Well, we can just spend as much as we want because the roads are in such poor condition. So, I appreciate the fact that when Matt gets complaints about roads from, from those of us on the council, he sends out people to take a look at that and, and he uses the system. For example, on the alternate list, the last two north-south streets, they are adjacent to, uh, a park. They're not traveled hardly at all. I mean, people do, you know, make that turnaround from one street to the other. And that was, those were two streets that I brought to, to Matt's attention, and you can tell that they're rated a four, but the repair job for both those streets are over half a million dollars. And that's just not something you pull out the checkbook for and, you know, write a check to fix the streets. So I guess I'm going to ask, now that I've made all those comments, to ask Matt to talk about, uh, the Pacer, you know, how the, the industry uses that. I think you've gone over how you select the streets, Matt, and then maybe give a really short, near Andrew, too, of like, okay, if we just arbitrarily decided to spend $3 million instead of 1.8, how that would affect the city budget? Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you for the questions. Um, as, as stated, Pacer rating, there are, there are two types of rating conditions that you can use. One is Pacer and, um, one is, I can't remember the acronym for it, but is one to 100. Um, they look at the same distresses. So, um, we, we look at the same distresses and the, and the same issues that we see within our roads. Industry-wide in the state of Wisconsin, through the Department of Transportation, they do use the Pacer rating. Such we, we follow that, um, suggestion and, and those uses as guidance, um, through our funding, uh, through the programs that we enter our data. Um, this is a common practice throughout the entire state. So as far as Pacer raising, um, we're pretty much standard on that. Um, that doesn't change. We don't do favors, we don't look at it in any different, um, different way or try to favor one district versus the other or one classification versus, you know, of whether it's a local or a highly functional classification. You, you look at distresses, period, and that's it. Um, so everything is looked at the same way. As far as budgetary, looking at our roads, as you can see, both, both options, we have micro-surfacing, which is considered a maintenance procedure. Um, typically you like to see those on six, sevens, eights. What you're trying to do there is along the life of the road with minimal dollars. Be as efficient as you can with the dollars you have. Um, you'll notice that we are treating approximately 2.4 miles, 2.5 miles, center lane miles roadway. We have approximately 144 in the city that we maintain. Um, so if you want to put that into an easy ratio, every 70 years a road gets touched with a million dollars. Typically, you're supposed to touch a road every 12 years. Um, so that puts it in perspective. So we can't do every road, we can't do everything that everyone wants, we have to be very selective to get the best use of our dollars that are provided. So that hopefully answers that one question on how we look at roads and trying to do it. So if you want to look at our micro-surfacing, it is 10% of our budget, but it's 50 to 60% of the roads that we're handling. So, I mean, we're trying to get out, to push our health of our roads out and be able to manage the ones that are starting to fail. Um, if we want to look at the programs we have, and, and we discussed this in BAPWACA, we are going to give a presentation earlier this next year to kind of, you know, support those ideas so you have a better understanding of why maintenance and dollars and certain amounts are really needed. Um, if you want to look at the programs we're using right now, we're probably sitting around 2.5 to 3 million to be able to maintain our system properly. We know that we can't fund that, we understand that, so we're trying to do the best we can with the dollars we're provided. That's why we look at grants and we look at other opportunities. And we've been very successful, I think, in the last five years to 10 years in, in gaining those grants and being able to do a lot of roads that would really have a heavier impact on, on what we do if we had to do those with just our capital dollars. So, um, our staff has been very good at gaining those for us and implementing those ways that we can use them.
Thank you. Jim?
I'm just happy to see Nicholson on the B-list. I have an SUV and my SUV has a hard time getting through there sometimes.
I agree with Jim. If I receive complaints from anything, it is on the very last one, Nicholson. Quite a few complaints, so it does show that city engineering is receptive to comments and complaints, and they do look at it, so thank you.
Kenny, I don't know if you, I don't know if you noticed in the staff report too, that BAPWACA made a point of giving engineering the flexibility and the, uh, direction to pick the alternates as they saw fit as budget.
Wonderful. That's putting the experts in charge, I like that.
Yeah, so our, our approach with that is we'll, we'll pick a couple of road sections. So we'll have a base bid and then we'll have a number of alternate bids with that, and then we'll be able to bring that forward to council after that project has been advertised and then, um, we receive bids, we'll be able to bring it forward to you, and then we'll be able to go through those selections, um, which will give you more opportunities once again.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, motion on 14.
Question.
Yes.
So do we have to, uh, read the resolution as is, or do we have to add in the two alternates?
I think we have to, we should probably designate option B as the, heard. The choice that, that's the, that's the recommendation BAPWACA had recommended.
Yes, if you, if you approve the resolution as written, that would be option B.
Ritz will move to adopt resolution number 12462-121923 authorizing recommended road improvement projects to be advertised for public bid for rehab, uh, rehabilitation in 2024.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 15 is consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship of Parking Lot Maintenance LLC and authorizing the final contract payment under project number 18021. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as stated, this is the resolution for accepting the workmanship of Parking Lot Maintenance for the sidewalk improvements on South 13th Street, which was from Drexel Avenue to approximately 2,000 linear feet to the north. Um, this section of sidewalk was eliminated per our request from the city in 2019 to the county, um, under their project, and that request was supported by the development at that hard corner. We wanted to have basically control at that point of the development, and we didn't see the fit to install sidewalk under county project if it was going to change. So we had a request to eliminate the sidewalk with an agreement that one year after the project, if the development did not put it in or the development ceased, um, the city would then put plans together and install a sidewalk. Unfortunately, in 2020, as everyone knows, the pandemic hit, um, things kind of ceased to move forward, and in 2022, we were re, uh, this was brought back up from the county as far as our agreements that were provided and, and our requests. Um, therefore, we brought the project forward. Um, it was bid out and it was worked through. There are some overruns as stated in the report, and those were primarily for the crushed aggregate underneath the concrete sidewalk and the restoration costs. Restoration costs were based on their ability to get in, to put in the sidewalk, um, and, and pour it and construct it. Um, that was unaccounted for in our estimate. And then the crushed aggregate was the extension or width to be able to put their forms in and construct the sidewalk. Those are why we have those overruns. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt? Yeah, we'll have to wait for.
I have no questions.
We will look for a motion then if there's no discussion, uh, on item 15.
Kowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 12463-121923 accepting the workmanship Parking Lot Maintenance LLC and authorizing final contract payment under project number 18021. Kowski, a second.
Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item 16 is consideration of a resolution releasing the developer from the development agreement and deed restrictions for the Edgemont Estate subdivision that was recorded June 27th, 2007. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is the resolution to release the developer of the development agreement and deed restrictions for Edgemont Estate subdivision that was recorded in 2007. If you recall, two weeks ago, we approved the development agreement for the same subdivision and development. This happens to be the same developer, just under a different LLC. Um, so we're cleaning title to the property on the agreement that they have here. Um, this agreement, there was no infrastructure put in, the project ceased to move forward. Um, the project, they're the developer at the time with LLC is no longer in existence, created a new one and is now moving forward with the project. So this is kind of a title cleanup so they can move forward and have clean title on the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Alma Nicholson.
Yes.
Um, motion then on 16.
Gail move to approve resolution 12464-121923 releasing the developer from the development agreement and deed restrictions for the Edgemont Estate subdivision recorded in June 27th, 2007.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 17 is consideration of a resolution entering into a local county agreement between the city of Milwaukee, between the city and Milwaukee County for the cost sharing of Milwaukee County's South 13th Street reconstruction project from West Pewett's Road to West Drexel Ave.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as everyone is aware, um, Milwaukee County will be reconstructing South 13th Street from Pewett's over to Drexel this next summer. One of the kind of housekeeping ideas is to come up with our agreement for the work that they'll be doing on our utilities, which will be manhole adjustments, um, and other utility adjustments. It's easier to have it within the project for them to adjust it while they're constructing it. It gives them some flexibility and then we're not doing as much as we need. That is 100% on the municipality for those utilities. This would be primarily sanitary sewer, water valves, and other, uh, facilities that water and sewer has. This is standard agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Matt? Okay, seeing none, motion.
Kowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 12466-121923 entering into a local county agreement between the city and Milwaukee County for cost sharing of Milwaukee County's South 13th Street reconstruction project from West Pewett's to West Drexel Avenue.
Ritz will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
And item 18 is consideration of a resolution accepting the workmanship of Edgerton Contractors, Inc., and authorizing final contract payment under project number 23006. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone is aware, the last main facility and large structure down at Lakefront is removed. Um, this is closing out that project. The overruns there were unforeseen, um, things as they pulled up the concrete floor, they were finding tunnels, extra timber, um, objects that you just, you're never going to be able to identify just by visually looking at the project. There was no housekeeping records or other records during construction of those tunnels or timbers that they found. Pretty common when you get into any kind of construction like this, a demo. Handled very well by Susan and our environmental engineers out there in Edgerton did an exceptional job. It's cleaned up, all the concrete has been crushed, we're going to be utilizing that either in the bluff stabilization we're doing or any future roadways and other projects at the lakefront. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt? If not, uh, motion please.
Marshall moves to adopt resolution number 12467-12923 a resolution accepting the workmanship of Edgerton Contractors, Inc., and authorizing the final contract payment under project number 23006.
Kowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 20 is consideration to approve the December 13th, 2023 vendor summary report in the amount of $2,167,604.24. Of this total, $2,142,066.92 will affect the 2023 fiscal year, with the remaining $25,000, $25,537.32 affecting 2024. Please take a look, and if you have any questions, feel free to take the floor and direct your questions to the person you think can appropriately answer. And you're satisfied, there's no discussions, questions?
Marshall moves to approve the December 13th, 2023 vendor summary report in the total of $2,167,604.24.
Kuzickowski, a second.
Roll call.
Elderwoman Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
And item 21 is consideration of a resolution authorizing payments of bills, debts, and obligations. Questions, comments about what we're doing here?
Done it before.
A little vague.
We're skipping that first meeting.
Well, we are skipping a first meeting, so we are still obligated for the city to be liable for their debts, bills, and obligations. Seeing as we're vacating that first meeting after January, uh, this authorizes staff to take care of that. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, motion.
Gail move to approve resolution 12458-121923 authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Kuzickowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
And as is, as is, as this is our last meeting of the year, um, give each the floor, it's been quite a year for us. If anybody would like to say anything, starting with Steve.
Well, Mayor, it has been quite a year. I mean, we, uh, uh, just the recovery from, uh, from the pandemic and trying to get back to normal, and, uh, I think everybody's done a stellar job. I mean, that's been said over and over and over again, so I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year's, drive safe, and, uh, you're out there driving, as a family member used to say, watch out for the idiots, don't become one, so.
Yeah.
It's been eight years since I've been on the council, and, uh, I'm impressed with the efficiency that we've developed in the councils.
Very good.
Lisa?
I'd like to thank the staff for, for a really wonderful year, and, uh, I hope they have a happy holiday season.
And as you're well aware, we have chops and serious work this year as an organization. You guys should all be proud of the work we've done. Andrew and Max, you guys have led a serious effort here on behalf of the community, so we really appreciate the work that's been done. So between the organization, land agreements, it really has been remarkable, the stuff that you guys have been carrying, we really appreciate it.
Yes.
I just want to thank, uh, everyone on the staff. No, no matter the job, they're all needed. Every, every last person out and about, thank you for all the hard work that, uh, you do for Oak Creek.
Andrew, would you like the floor?
Uh, there's good staff everywhere in every municipality, not, not as good as ours, uh, but we are. Uh, but we are very blessed to have a really great common council that supports us, a great mayor. So we're blessed that way, and, and I am just super excited for 2024. We have a lot of new things, a lot of new people, a lot of new energy, uh, coming into the organization, um, losing some institutional knowledge and some talent that has been here for an extremely long time and has been invaluable to the community, but a lot of new beginnings and a lot, lot to be thankful for in '24 with council support, so thank you.
Um, I myself, uh, try, I, I will try not to be redundant, but, uh, once again, uh, this is a remarkable community. From, first of all, our staff, all the people behind the scenes, we talked about unsung heroes from dispatch to DPW, um, health and library, they all, they all mesh together to really bring those things that are vital to a community together. And then I have the pleasure of working with these men and women up here, uh, which really makes this seat and this job much easier uh, when you know you're being led properly and with the right decisions. And I think that was all in display over the last couple of meetings and how we get things done here. Um, Oak Creek is very highly respected, not only in the county, but throughout the state in my travels. Um, it's an incredible place to be right now, and I'm just very fortunate to be part of it. And I want to thank you all for all your hard work, because whenever I need an answer, uh, you guys always magically have it, so. Um, I'm going to wish you all a very safe, happy, and prosperous new year and wish you happy holidays. Please, um, if you have the time, you know, um, if you got to do something, be kind to somebody in this holiday season. It's probably the best gift he can give, so I'll leave it at that. We'll ask for adjournment.
Kelski, make a motion to adjourn.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzickowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Ritz.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Night, everybody.